Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Delverlos.
President.
Marygah.
Norhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwijk.
Here.
And Mayor Moss.
We've had a request from Mayor Moss to be excused from the meeting tonight. He is traveling, so there are motions to excuse Mayor Moss tonight.
So, both support.
Motion support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Great. Well, tonight, we have for our invocation Pastor Louis Sines from the Granville-Jones Congregational Church. For those of you who wish, I'd invite you to join with us for the invocation of our Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. If you all would please pray with me. Dear Father and God, Maker of all that is seen and unseen, we are gathered here tonight to do the work that You have ordained for us to do. Remind us that our service to others is our service to You. And Lord, we thank You for all of the blessings that You have showered on our city. We thank You for the help that You have given us, that we may fulfill our duties and our responsibilities. Lord, You establish authorities to promote and ensure peace, order, and justice. So, we ask that You bless our mayor, this council, all of our city officials and leaders with Your presence and the wisdom of Your Spirit. Bless them with a sense of welfare, a desire for what is right, confidence in their own talents and abilities, a sense of harmony as they work together. We ask that You bless them with peace in their lives and a joy for the task at hand. And Lord, remind all of us to thank them when we see them for their dedication and caring for Granville and all of its citizens. And we pray this in Your most blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, as always.
Well, thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure. We have the agenda before you this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Some.
Support. Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. All those opposed, please say no. You also have the minutes from February 10th. It feels like a long time ago, but it wasn't. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to add about the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
Motion?
Support.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please say no. Presentation of the bills. Griffin, substantial amount, as always. That's great. Anything you want to lead us over?
Yes, thank you. Happy to highlight just a few for you all this evening. Kind of one that's becoming a little more normal over the last year is pretty large invoice in the amount of $390,712 to the Franklin Howard Company. Again, this is ongoing progress payments regarding the clean water plant blower project that they're making progress on. We have an invoice in the amount of just over $5,000 to IP Consulting, Inc. This is a standard monthly payment for the cell by phone system, just one I'm not sure we highlight all that often. Would like to highlight an invoice in the amount of $4,005 to Oliver Van Dyke Insurance. This is a company that the city works with to provide employee benefit support. So annually, they go out and do provide brokerage services for the health insurance and related employee benefit services that we offer, as well as on an ongoing basis, provide enrollment support and the like. We're actually just put out an RFQ last month to either look at continuing services with them, but to explore what other options may be out there. So that is just one to kind of put in the back of your mind. We may have some additional discussion about in the upcoming months. We have an invoice in the amount of $31,708 to Quality Air. This was the replacement of the HVAC units at DPW that was approved on October 28th. And then lastly, an invoice from Strain Electric for $28,870. This was in regard to rerouting the electric feed at the library, and this was authorized by the council on August 26th. Happy to discuss any others with you all, but otherwise, a pretty standard amount and a pretty standard distribution of this meeting's bills.
Great, thanks, Griffin. Any questions for Griffin or finance director or any department heads that are here? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $868,450 and 44 cents?
Some.
Support. Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Marygah.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. Public comments. Anybody here from the public wanting to address the council? Come on up. Give us your name and address. What else were you thinking about?
He gave me permission.
Come on up.
Well, it's getting close to April, and Arbor Day, and all the things that we do in the spring are coming up very quickly. As of Saturday, the Tree Granville opens up again, and so any property owner in the city of Granville can purchase a tree with 50% off the cost of it, and they will deliver a week before Arbor Day. And so we'll start posting these. They're on our webpage. It's on our Facebook page, just so that you know what was going on. And I want to thank you guys for giving us $5,000 to match. I'm like so excited. We're trying to like target some of the areas where people would really like to put a tree on, like maybe the Old Dill property and some other things like that. So it'll be pretty exciting to see what we can do this year. Then also on March 1st, we're holding a pruning class here, and it's going to be at the Granville Library. And the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, who are our mentors for our tree, our community foresters, are actually going to come and present that class. And the Tree Amigos from Wyoming are also going to come. So they're very excited to be included in some of the classes that we've been doing. They seem to think that we're further ahead in this tree planting game than they are, and I don't know about that. But it's nice to have a collaboration between three organizations that do the similar things. And then each year, we always run a T-shirt contest for the winning design for Arbor Day. And so we take this to the school, and then the kids actually design a T-shirt, and then each school submits one design, and then our board picks the design, and it gets printed for the student that wins, and they get a small little gift. And then it also goes on our apparel store so that we can all wear Arbor Day shirt that was made by one of the students. So I'm hoping that we can see some faces here in our classes or at part of our celebrations. We are going to be doing Arbor Day on April 25th, and we haven't determined the time exactly, but I think we're going to make a mini forest in the parking lot behind like the bookstore in Johnson Carpet.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. What size trees are those residents could purchase?
They vary, and usually our largest trees are usually like a 10-gallon pot. And if you look at the Facebook page, it's a pretty heavy tree, but it'll be like inch and a half, two-inch caliber tree. And they make some pretty nice trees. You'll see some that were planted last year. Some of them are smaller. If there's a particular tree that anybody wants, if they request it, and it's available from our supplier, I will add it to the store. And one of the things I've been asked already are some fruit trees. Can I add fruit trees? And I put a couple on last year, but I will put a couple more on. So they're pretty nice-sized trees, and they're doing pretty well. I know the Senior Condos, they've bought three the year before and one last year, and those trees are doing really well. So that's kind of exciting. And then we'll hold the class on how to plant them before the trees come into you.
Our debrief's been around the corner.
And I will email all this to you guys so that you have it, but thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. Anybody else?
Mikeoff, 336240. As the pastor said so eloquently, thank you to all for your service. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Pastor. Anybody else want to speak for public comment? All right, moving on, we have several ordinances and resolutions. Griffin, do you want to just take us through kind of the process here, and then we'll kind of go through them one by one?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And I know Assistant City Manager Matt Butts is going to come up and dive into them in a little more detail. But the first one we have for you all is a rezoning request for 2871 and 2889, 44th Street. The application was received as seeking a rezoning from the OS-1 zoning district to the C-1. The action would support the marketing of the property for development and be consistent with the master plan. Ultimately, our understanding is the property owners are looking to promote the two lots for redevelopment along 44th. As many of you know, at that location, there's a lot of other retail already in the area, but the existing OS-1 zoning is really office-specific, where C-1 gives them some additional flexibility on the retail side. But I'll go ahead and hand it over to Matt. I know he's been working with the applicant for some time on this one.
Thank you, Griffin. Good evening. When you look and examine whether or not to rezone a property, look at what we call the three Cs in the planning world. Is it consistent with the master plan is number one? Is the request consistent with this running area? Griffin touched on that. And are the properties involved or property-involved? Are they capable of sustaining the proposed land uses? The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and they looked at these standards, and they found that yes, indeed. This request from the Hidman Group, we have Rich McDonald here tonight from the Hidman Group, does in fact meet these three standards that laid out the zoning ordinance. The request again is go from an OS-1 to a C-1, which allows for retail. One of the parcels is currently developed as a medical use, so this would be that corner property on the corner of Spartan Industrial and 44th Street that would probably see, I'm guessing we see special land use request shortly before the Planning Commission for that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Any questions for Matt or Griffin on this first zoning ordinance?
Just a friendly reminder on all three of these zoning ordinance tonight, this is just going to be considered the first reading. So all we're looking for this evening is an introduction and a table for consideration at the next meeting, March 10th.
Great. Well, is there anybody willing to introduce the zoning ordinance 25012 for the first reading tonight?
So.
Support. Motion support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Marygah.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. Any other questions about that ordinance or any other further discussion? Took a breath like you were gonna...
I was gonna say, motion to table.
Yeah, is there a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Support.
Support. All those up tabling, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Great, second one, zoning ordinance 25013. Matt, you want to jump into that?
Absolutely, thank you. This is a request that was not generated by a property owner, but instead by the city. Started the conversation between the DDA and the Planning Commission. These parcels, there are 11 parcels. If you'd like, I can read each one of those parcels for you. It's up to you how far you want me to go on that. To go from what is currently Central Business District, which is the core downtown, to what's called Downtown Edge, kind of the periphery of downtown, where the land uses are slightly different, but especially what's different are the building types. For instance, in the Downtown Edge, you can have a single-story building that could be newly built. In Core Downtown CBD District, that's not allowed. Another example, I think I laid this out in my memo to you, is in the Core Downtown, window transparency needs to be 70%. Again, we're looking for that classic downtown look in our Core Downtown. On the periphery, you only need 40% in the Downtown Edge. The Planning Commission feels strongly that by rezoning these 11 properties, it will help possibly future development, especially as we're working with some potential developers. They're seeing the same things we are when it comes to these standards. Also, what it does is it creates a natural transition between our Core Downtown and the neighborhood to the south, which is much more of our older traditional neighborhood. As planners, we always try to find those transitions, right? What works the best between more intense use such as a Core Downtown and a neighborhood? And this would fit the bill perfectly. Beyond that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only thing I'd like to add to that, if I can, is one of the other discussion points that arose from this, both from some conversations that some private developers had with staff, also some of the conversation from the DDA and the city, and then ultimately it was discussed with the Planning Commission, is the idea that our Central Business District zoning is really designed for that traditional Main Street feel. So think frontage on Chicago Drive, even think frontage on Wilson. These 11 parcels that are being recommended for rezoning are not properties with frontage on those Main Streets. They tend to be set back a little bit, again, more of that buffer zone in between the traditional downtown and those Main Streets and some of these surrounding neighborhoods. So it gives them, it would give them a little more flexibility and other land type, or excuse me, building type options for those not immediately fronting the Main Street.
The Planning Commission did a three-C test of this as well, and they found that it met all three for all 11 properties.
Great. Is there a motion to introduce zoning ordinance 25-013?
Some.
Motion.
Support.
Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Marygah.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. Any questions on that?
I do have a couple of questions about it. So I do have a couple of questions about it. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm curious how you take the parcels that were included. A good chunk of these are city property that will never be developed or unlikely. Who knows? But at this point, there's no potential for that. You've got a parking lot on the one side that's bisected, half of it's in, half of it's out. You've got another building that's connected to a different building that's part of it. And then you've got part of another parking lot, which includes the pavilion. A quarter of the pavilion's in it, but the rest of it's not. I'm just curious why they didn't have that yet?
It came on that discussion with you and the DDA and the Planning Commission. You write about the parking lots. They also need to zone. Could they potentially be developed or partially developed in the future? That is conceivable. That is a possibility. That's not part of any current plan other than the one that we're discussing right now. So, but points will take...
The other piece I can add to that is, you know, these, this was a discussion that we were having with McKenna and Chris Corey as well, and they were actually the ones who proposed these parcels. I know some of them look funny, particularly some of the municipally owned ones, like with the pavilion in there.
Yeah.
But these are...
Including that part of it.
And that's, my understanding is this is because this is where the actual parcel lines are, even though the development of the pavilion intersects different parcels. Because they were all owned by the city, it's able to be done that way, but this is actually what the truly legal parcel lines would be. I completely see what you're saying, though, particularly like that area in the middle. It's really, I mean, this change probably isn't going to impact, you know, right, the library and some of those parking lots where it's very unlikely that you're ever going to see private development. But for properties like the bank, the office building, and then some of the parcels on the south side of Maple there, including over to Red Mill, kind of the explanation that was given, we feel like is valid in the sense of these are not kind of Main Street fronting properties, but nevertheless, more of that intermediate area.
Yeah, that's fine. It was just more of a curiosity, sure, as why we took certain ones and not other ones that were...
And when you do a rezoning like this too, as you know, you, particularly to avoid kind of confusion on zoning maps, definitely any kind of unfair claims of like spot zoning, you do want to try to kind of create a strip of them, if you will. So I don't want to speak for McKenna or for Chris, but that's probably why my guess of like the ones on the east side and the west side makes sense, and then there's a few in the middle like that or the parking lot. You wouldn't want to not change those and have this seem kind of un-uniform or inconsistent, if that makes any sense.
Sure. Any else, Josh?
No, I'm sorry. Thanks for entertaining your question. I just wanted to see kind of...
Anybody else have questions? No? Is there a motion to table the ordinance 25-012?
Some.
Support. Motion support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. All right, final one, zoning ordinance 25-014.
So these are text amendments to Section 8 of the zoning ordinance that deals with commercial properties. More specifically, this deals with C4 or regional mall properties, even more specifically deals with outlots. Currently, our zoning ordinance is silent on outlaw requirements and the development. There was a handshake done. I found a sticky note in an old plane from 2001 that said, "We agree on these terms." Never got codified into the ordinance, which is just amazing to me. So what this does, it does actually take those standards, it codifies them. We did double-check to make sure any existing outlaw meets these standards. They all do. We also anticipate, as we continue to work with POE, that additional outlots are foreseeable on the mall property. This also takes hotels and motels, which are currently allowed only as a special land use, and makes them a permitted land use, and also gets rid of a standard that requires all buildings to face what's termed major arterial streets, which is Wilson and River Tom Parkway. As POE works on their vision and their plan, this would allow them to say if they designed like more of a courtyard or central parking area for any outlaw to face each other instead of out directly. The Planning Commission had a long conversation about this. They do have some concern about this. However, they were satisfied that any of those would have to be a site plan that they would have to approve, and they're going to look critically at things like landscaping and buffering, especially if the views along River Tom Parkway and Wilson. Beyond that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks, Matt. Any questions before we introduce that zoning ordinance? No, if not, is there a motion to introduce zoning ordinance number 25-014?
So.
Support. Motion and support. Thank you. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Marygah.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. And table that one as well. Anybody in favor of that?
Motion.
Great. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed. Griffin, when can we expect to see those back?
They will be back on March 1st.
March 10th. Great, thank you. Moving along, the consent agenda is a little hefty tonight. We have reports from the investment from January, the minutes from the library board of January 23, Planning Commission of February 5, and then we have a couple of agreements between Kent County arrest processing fees, Kent County jail per diem, and then we have an appointment for the zoning board appeals that term is ending year-end of 2027, and that motion of the consent agenda should name Mark Larrabell as that member. We have authorization for the summer recreation agreement with Granville Public Schools. We have a waiver and consent authorization for the 2019 personal property taxes. Resolution number 3365 with M.DOT. And then the final agenda item for the consent is the budget work session on Monday, March 17th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Happy to pull any of those out. Otherwise, if not, I'd like to approve the consent agenda and then ask Griffin to question anything anybody wants. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Support.
Motion. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Delverlos.
Yes.
Marygah.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwijk.
Yes. Anything specific you want to touch on with any of those?
Just real briefly, I apologize for the longer consent agenda than normal. I figured these are all pretty standard, routine business items, and we're more comfortable than needing to spend more time later. But just some highlights, both agreements with Kent County, the changes are very minor. Kent County adjusted its fiscal year from a September year-end to a calendar year, so they just wanted to update these agreements to be consistent with that. The annual summer recreation agreement with Granville Public Schools is almost identical to that you've seen the last handful of years. I do want to note that the agreement was after consulting with Community Ed. It was adjusted back to the $18,000 that we have been paying for the last approximately a decade. The reason that was adjusted back is because that was the amount that was included in the adopted budget for this year, but they do have interest in seeing that increase to $20,000 moving forward. So that's something we'll plan on including in the upcoming year's budget proposal. We can discuss more at that time if you all would like. And the last piece I just want to highlight because it'll be a substantial project for really the region is the M.DOT contract. That is in regard to the resurfacing of Kenowa Avenue. That is actually a Grand Valley Metro Council project, so in a way, I like to think of it, it's more of a regional project because it's also the county line. But I appreciate you guys working through that consent agenda. I'm happy to discuss any more of those at another time if you all would like.
Great. Any final thoughts on the consent agenda?
I did have a question. I think you kind of answered it apart, but the Kenowa Avenue resurfacing, is that a shared cost between Allen County and us, or do we have, is the county line right down the middle, or is it on one side or the other or whatever?
No, it's through the Grand Valley Metro Council. They pay 8% of the project, and we pay the rest.
So they're using tip funds.
Yeah, this is one of those projects that's got on the five-year tip that have been planned for a handful of years. Charlie and his team do a really good job. We tend to get about one project a year, four out of every five years on the tip. So this is a pretty substantial one.
Yeah, that's a good one for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Moving on, Griffin, City Manager's report.
Awesome, thank you. The first item I have for you all, besides, before we consider whether or not to go into closed session, is a little bit of a follow-up from a conversation we had a few meetings ago. During the public hearing for the Parks and Rec Plan, you all heard from some neighbors who continue to be concerned about the impacts of the Granville Little League on their neighborhood. My understanding, and having discussions with many of you, that this is not a new issue, that this has been something that's been going on for some time. So the team put some thought into what options do we have to try to, you know, work through this in a way that, you know, doesn't put the city in a position of needing to take sides, but nevertheless recognizes that, you know, there is a conflict here, particularly involving parking, and, you know, what leadership can we provide to try to, to try to work through that? So had some conversations with the West Michigan, or excuse me, the Dispute Resolution Center of West Michigan. They primarily do mediations, private mediations and court-assigned mediations for different topics, but they also do some community engagement and community mediation from time to time. And figured this could be a good opportunity to bring a neutral third party in like that to help us kind of outline a clear process for both the Little League, the involved parents, and the impacted neighbors, and hopefully get some assistance in facilitating some stakeholder meetings prior to the start of the Little League season. Recognizing that that season is kind of right around the corner, going to start here at the beginning of April, we're a little tight in time, and I want to be realistic that I, we're probably not going to solve everyone's problem by then, but what we all have in your packet, you know, is a proposal that really proposes three different steps to try to start to work through this. The first one would be an open community meeting where really, technically anybody, but particularly those involved in the problem would be invited to meet the Dispute Resolution Center of West Michigan, the facilitator, and have them walk through the proposed process for this, you know, talk through some of these kind of community healing practices that they have a lot of experience with, and then get some buy-in from these different groups, whether or not they'd like to participate. I know what we're looking for is, you know, if this is something the city wants to move forward with, I think the investment we're going to be looking for from the community I think the investment we're gonna be looking for from the community is their, their willingness to participate in a process like this and at least to attempt to, um, to come to some kind of resolution. Step two would be for, uh, the dispute resolution center to host individual stakeholder meetings, um, give these groups the opportunity to kind of vent their concerns, and also give the facilitator an opportunity to, you know, hear from each side and get a better understanding of, um, what their problems are, what their potential solutions would be, and kind of what they would need to see, uh, to be able to move forward with this. Um, and then lastly, we'd be looking for, you know, two to three, maybe four, kind of representatives from each one of these groups to come together in a final meeting where we would work towards some kind of agreement on how we can move forward. Uh, I do wanna set, I think, real, realistic expectations, both for the staff, the council, and anyone who may be listening. You know, I, I, I'm not naive that I think there's gonna be some magical answer that comes out of a process like this. Uh, but I do think, um, this is gonna be probably our best chance to try to bring the temperature down, uh, on this situation and give us the best chance to get, uh, people to a point where they can come together and hopefully begin to move forward. So with all that being said, you know, I'm, I'm happy to talk through this in more detail. I'm definitely willing to consider other options, you know, that may be out there, um, but nevertheless wanted to at least bring you, um, you know, an option that I see as, as kind of something that could give us a good chance to move forward with this.
Yeah, the one thing I liked on here, Griffin, was just that there was a, a maximum number up here, not necessarily a minimum. So I'd like that, that kind of our setting threshold that how much we're willing to spend here. But, uh, any other questions for Griffin on this? I know this has been a...
I think that's a good point too, if I can hit on that. You know, I just, you know, regardless of what happens here, I know another, another goal of something like this is, you know, this is gonna give the city council the opportunity in having conversations with, you know, the people involved in this, the neighbors, the parents, the Little League, that, you know, we are very much taking this seriously. I think some of the comments we heard the other day was, you know, there's some fear that, that we're not. And, you know, this definitely is going to give you all as the council and us as an organization the opportunity to look and go, no, we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is. You know, the city's considering an investment to try to work through this problem. And really what we need back is your investment back in terms of your time and your willingness to, um, you know, participate in something like this.
Yeah, that's a great point. Any other questions for Griffin? Dave, anything you wanna add on this?
No, I mean, I've seen, you know, alternatives to be a resolution like this work well in this situation where you really need to find a way to kind of get all the stakeholders in one room, and the city council meeting isn't necessarily the best place to do that. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic that this will give you the best possible shot to, you know, come to a, some sort of resolution that all stakeholders buy in on. So, I mean, I think it makes sense, and certainly it'll allow the, the folks that were concerned to see that the city cares about and is taking steps to try to resolve the issue.
I'm happy to see us moving forward with, with something, so it's great. Alright, I guess we're looking for authorization to engage with the dispute resolution center of West Michigan.
So...
Support. Motion support. Marcy, would you call the role please?
Councilmember Merrickah?
Yes.
Norhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. Uh, before we move to the, um, closed session, anything else on the, the city managers report that you had to hit on?
Just a couple more announcement items I'd, I'd like to share. You know, first, um, just as a reminder for everyone, that the city annually hosts, um, these, the Granville Public School second grade classes to, uh, tours of various city facilities. Um, I know Marcy's been working, um, really closely to help coordinate that. Um, and we are anticipating that they'll be coming again as normal in, in the April and May timeline. So if any of you'd like to be involved in that in any degree, please let us know and we'll, um, clarify in on what's being planned. Um, excited to share that the, uh, Chicago Pub re-opened on Friday last week. Um, I think it came a little bit to, as a surprise to us. Um, but nevertheless, um, DDA Director Teresa Mendering attended their soft opening last week, and then from what we heard over the weekend, it was a, a good first start. So, um, you know, excited to get to know the new ownership, uh, better over the upcoming years, and definitely excited that, that, um, that facility is back open in our downtown. And lastly, I wanna give a little bit of an update on, um, uh, the fire department. They've been incredibly busy over the last couple of weeks. I know I, I shared with all of you, um, earlier today in an email that they had a, a pretty significant structured fire, um, over the weekend. Uh, fortunately, no one was injured, both residents and, and firefighters. Um, but, uh, that, that was kind of significant this weekend, um, as well as they're continuing to work on the aftermath of the, uh, fire truck accident that happened a couple of weeks ago. Um, we did have, uh, a representative from our insurance company, um, our sales rep, and a repair estimator, both from Pierce, are the fire truck manufacturer, um, in town today. Um, they spent several hours with the chief and, and other staff, kind of reviewing the damage. At least at this point in time, they still think there are hopes that it might be able to be fixed. Um, so we're going through some additional steps there to kind of get a final determination on whether or not it's gonna be totaled or if we're gonna move forward with some repairs. So as of right now, kind of cost and timeline are still TBD, um, but we'll do the best we can to keep you all updated as we go. I know, um, Chief may be happy to discuss more, answer any other questions, um, that you all may have. But, um, otherwise, we've, we've got some more of the, the less fun stuff to work through over the, of the upcoming days and weeks.
Great, thanks. Uh, yeah, before we move to, um, our closed session, we'll lift your councilmember comments and, uh, Paul, what's up with you tonight?
Uh, thanks. I haven't, I haven't... Uh, thanks, Matt, for the summaries. Made it very, uh, clear to me, um, coming in tonight. Uh, also, our, uh, local cable channel, WCT, is back on, um, spectrum. Finally got HD, and so, uh, we're back on, uh, spectrum cable. Um, that's all I have.
Justin?
Um, the mention of the second graders doing their tour reminded me that I had asked the historical commission if they could put together a presentation to bring to council to kind of share. I know that we've been trying to get more boards to come forward and share. And especially, um, since there will be a new council member on the historical commission next year, I wanted to make sure that people had a clear understanding of what the work is that they do. I think they, um, you know, contribute a lot behind the scenes that people don't necessarily know is why not. So I have asked them to put together a presentation, and, uh, the managers office should receive something soon.
Josh?
Yeah, not too much. Um, appreciate everybody supporting that resolution to engage the dispute resolution center. I think that's a good move. Appreciate Griffin bringing that forward. It's kind of an out of the box idea to address that situation. I guess I'm curious what the next step would be then? Is to connect with the Little League board and the neighbors to say, hey, we're gonna send a meeting. Is that the next step?
Yeah, I, the next step's probably a couple pieces. I mean, uh, yeah, it'll be reaching out as early as tomorrow or later this week to some of these stakeholders that we hear from regularly and kind of fill them in, um, that this is something we're gonna be moving forward with. Uh, I don't wanna get too far of our head of ourselves. I need to confirm a date specifically for that first meeting, but what I would see us doing is, you know, sending out invitations and directly reaching out to those that we've already been in contact with. But I know Matt was also able to help me put together, uh, a map of kind of all the properties within three hundred square, or excuse me, three hundred feet of the Little League facility. Three hundred feet's a pretty standard, um, kind of noticing distance when it comes to zoning items. So we'll probably also look at putting together a mailer that we can send, um, just because, yes, there are a handful of impacted neighbors we hear from more often than others, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna only engage them. So, uh, we're gonna have some contacting to do later this week, but that, that's roughly the next steps. My hope is to do at least that first meeting, if not, um, the first kind of walkthrough overview meeting and the individual stakeholder meetings by the end of March. Um, we just obviously have to get those scheduled to try to make that happen.
Yeah, great. No, I think that's a good plan, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Randy?
Uh, yeah, excuse me, just a couple of things. I just wanted to say, Chief, may I feel your thing?
I just could've thrown up. The guys are okay, so that was the most important.
And somebody told me this was truck number, I don't know who, was it fifty-three?
No, fifty-five, and that won't happen again.
The last one that was crashed. It was fifty-five?
Yeah.
So we, we need to retire that.
No, that decision was made probably, uh, two days ago. I've seen that night.
Well, I, yeah, we're here, we're here to support, so, yeah, it's just one of those things.
It always could've been worse, but I appreciate the support and we'll keep you up to speed as...
Nobody got hurt.
There's no information, no information report, but right now it's, hurry up and wait.
Alright, and then a couple of other things. I was just gonna say, as, uh, Councilman Norhuck had announced earlier in the season that he was not going to be running for city council, I just wanna put it out there that I have decided to run for another term for city council. Uh, I was trying to do the math. I don't know exactly what it is, 'cause I was originally a president when Bob DeWitt passed away, so you're probably... Years. The senior, the senior member here, maybe a year more than me, but I gotta believe it's, if I am successful, it's probably gonna be twenty-three or twenty-four years or somewhere in that neighborhood. So that's a long time. And then that'll be sixty-eight, so I can't say I really see myself doing this again. But anyway, I have...
So you still have a speed?
Pardon?
Mayor still has.
So mayor still has a speed for the most serious of the speed. So I do plan on running again, and then I just wanted to say I will be absent at the next meeting. I'm going on vacation for a bit. And I'm having a really hard time keeping up with the mayor and J R. out of the vacation troops, but I'm trying. That's it.
Thanks.
Yeah, uh, Chief, I just, yeah, I hate when shiny stuff gets broken. Um, and I'm sure it was, you know, a terrible phone call that you got, but happy that, that the crew is okay. And including the, the person who you guys went to, to help. I heard that there was, they were on their way back to the truck to stay warm.
Yeah, they were probably still fifty feet away with, uh, I think that the first vehicle had pulled over that we were up there for initially. And, um, he was, uh, not hurt bad, so they were gonna move him to the fire truck to stay warm. It was pretty nasty that night. They were probably fifty feet on their way. Fifty feet away, on their way to put him in the engine just to sit until he got ride there when the engine was hit.
Wow. Well, I'm glad everyone's safe. And, and again, speaking of weather, Charlie, kudos to your team on keeping the roads, uh, pretty darn clear and, and very well salted. Yeah, Randy, take some of that salt with you on vacation for your connect. Uh, we have a request to, um, I'm just gonna read the motion here, to recess to a closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Consider a written attorney legal opinion exempt from disclosure under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act as permitted under section eight H of the Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion to recess?
So...
Support. Motion to support. Marcy, would you call the role please?
Councilmember Norhuck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Merrickah?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Vanderwaal.
Yes. We will, uh, recess for, I will call it two to three minutes, and, uh, yeah. Have a good night, everybody.